Okay, is that time? Please take a roll.
Harrington?
Here.
Hoffman?
Here.
Pollock?
Here.
Smith?
Okay, the agenda's before you, there's been no additions or deletions, a motion to accept would be in order.
So moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, motion carries. Consent agenda, any item on there that you'd like to pull out first and talk about it? If not, a motion to accept the consent agenda would be in order.
I'll move.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, motion carries. Kevin?
Okay, thank you Mayor. I've got a few projects to report on, I'll start with the Southwest Growth Utility Project. They have poured the floor and the stoops for the new list station building and they're working on the roof. They've installed now about ninety-five percent of the dual force mains in between Kansas and Jones Boulevard. So that's good, they're also installing some of the gravity sewer east of three eighty. We did have an incident on the project last week. There was a sinkhole that was discovered last week in the I three eighty median above the last boring. And it was repaired soon after it was discovered, it was the same day. They were able to repair it and then actually came back Friday night to do some more work on it. I, I drove out there Saturday and Sunday just to check on it because of all the rain that we got on Saturday and it looked fine. And I did talk to the DOT construction engineer this morning and they're satisfied with all the repair work. And the contractor knows that they're responsible for any of the costs that might be associated with that. So they did have an incident. Rancho Way Phase Five, they're continuing to relocate a lot of the private utilities. Alliant and Lynn County REC are done with theirs and South Slope is almost done. And then we have Windstream MediaCom, Century Link and Mid-American all planning on April and May for their relocations. And then tonight is the public hearing and bids are due next Tuesday, April twentieth and that'll be through the DOT. So we should have a, an award recommendation for the May eleventh council meeting. The pool heater replacement project, that's on a, a very fast schedule. We've actually got the ninety-five percent staff review meeting planned for April twenty-sixth. So it's coming up pretty quick. And then we're planning on a public hearing on May twenty-fifth and awarding a contract at the first meeting in June. Working with the rec center and pool staff, we decided on a construction schedule of starting in mid-August and completing in mid-October. So there will be some downtime without the heater while the old boilers are removed. I can't give you the exact timeframe right now to contractors on board, but it'll be between, probably between mid-August and mid-October, hopefully not that full, that full time, but a fairly substantial amount of time. City Hall project, we're continuing working with staff on the floor plan. We're making some really good progress and we actually had tours of, Ryan was able to get us scheduled to tour Hiawatha and Marion City Halls yesterday. I think that was very beneficial, we got a really nice tour from the city administrator from Hiawatha and the city manager from Marion. Got some good ideas and they gave us some really good feedback on what they thought of their city halls, the good and the bad. So that was really good. And then Farver Green Road Trail Project and then Centennial Park Loop Road Project. Design has started on both of those and we've had our kickoff meetings with city staff on both of those projects. For the Farver Green Road Trail, we're looking at a public hearing in Ju-, on June twenty-second and awarding a contract in July with substantial completion in November. And then on the Centennial Park Loop Road, we're planning on awarding a contract in late July with substantial completion in May of two thousand and twenty-two. So both of those projects, I guess it depends on contractors' workloads in the middle of summer and whether we get good bids, the fallback will be we'll just probably recommend rejecting the bids if they come in too high in the middle of summer and bidding it out over the winter, but we're, we're hopeful at this point. So that's like all I have tonight unless you have questions for me.
Questions for Kevin?
Sorry, I was frantically trying to find my unmute button. Kevin, you mentioned the sinkhole that needed to be repaired for the Southwest Growth Area, Southwest Growth Area for I three eighty. How, what kind of, what do you do to repair that? You just stuff more material down the hole or?
Yeah.
Is it something from the bottom that's?
Yeah, what, what we think happened was they got some of the, that last board, I don't know if you remember, but it took them like forever to get it done.
Right.
And because they were running into these sand seams and we're, we're pretty confident that some of that sand got in the, the casing pipe and that created the sinkhole all the way to the surface. So it was discovered after, oh, I think we had a fairly heavy rain that Wednesday night and that, that, that showed the sinkhole, so they, they came in, they put in flowable concrete in the morning and then opened the, opened both lanes because they had to close off the left northbound lane for a amount of time while they did that. And then they came actually, actually back on Friday night. Our general contractor hired a firm out of Omaha to come in and actually injected pressure grout through the paving underneath to get the rest of it.
Okay.
And let's see, when I was talking to Hugh from the DOT today, he said they actually came back again on Sunday night, I think, to do a little bit more. And he was satisfied with that.
Okay.
There might be a little bit more on the southbound lanes, he's not sure yet, he's gonna just kind of watch it. So, yeah, he, he said, well, we're gonna be removing those lanes anyway in July, the northbound and then the southbound lanes in next year. So they will have full reconstruction over them, so he's not, he didn't seem to be too concerned about it. Other than that day, we're all kind of nervous that first day when it was discovered.
Sure, sure, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Kevin, just curious from the tours with Hiawatha and Marion, anything major to share at this point? From a design perspective?
Um, you know, they had, yeah, there's some good ones, they had, they had similar comments about, they wish they had better sight distance at the receiving window, both of them had that comment, so that was good to hear. They both wished they had, they had showers. And I think Marion is in the process of, I think, retrofitting and putting a shower in theirs. Other than that, you know, they're, they're, they're different because Hiawatha is a combination police, city hall and community center. All three wrapped into one building where Marion is just the city hall. But um, we took a lot of good notes and I know city staff got a lot of good ideas and we've already been talking about it today and we're gonna get together again either late this week or next week to refine. I think we're getting really close on the floor plan we've, we've got so far and I think this will solidify the, the floor plan. I don't know if Ryan or anyone wants to add anything to that. Ryan and, and Russ and Grant were also on that tour.
Mayor, if you'd like, I can, I can, I can jump in, add to Kevin's and then go into my report if that's okay?
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, I, I would just add that it was, we actually, there was a group of us that visited both those city halls probably ten years plus or minus ago when we were talking about designing a city hall at that time. And at that point, both those facilities were brand new. So it was nice to go back after they've been in those facilities for quite some time to better understand what's working and what, you know, could be better. And as Kevin said, we took a lot of notes and, and, and hope that will help us improve our design process. And we look forward to bringing back something to you folks here in the near future to, to show you what we've been working on because it's been, it's been, we've put, we've been spending a lot of time on it, almost, almost, I was just talking to Tracy about this, almost annoyingly so, but we, you know, we have to, it's important to, to put the time in upfront so that, uh, you know, we have, we know that we've thought through as much as we can anyway. A couple of things I have for you tonight. Just a reminder, at the end of the month, April twenty-fourth, I know I've, I've said it previously and I'll say it again at our next, no, I won't say it again in our next meeting because it'll be passed, but April twenty-fourth is our spring cleanup day from seven AM to eleven AM, this is gonna be very similar to previous years. I would just remind the public to stay in your vehicle when you drop stuff off at the site, our team will, will be there and unload everything, you don't, there's no reason to have to get out. So we've been publicizing that, we'll continue to do so and hope to have a good showing on that Saturday. We've been working with residents on the utility assistance program through the state. It's federal money flowing down from the state. To date, we have sixty-four accounts that have applied for funding that we're aware of anyway. There could be more people out there that just haven't notified us yet that they applied. And we just heard from a couple of folks who applied this week that they, that they did receive a confirmation email from the state, to my knowledge, no money's been distributed yet, but at least the state is starting to, to reach out to those who have applied. And then a couple pieces of good news, we were notified today that we were awarded thirty-nine thousand dollars for the siren upgrade that we applied for through FEMA, that's a forty-six thousand dollar project and so the majority of that'll be covered through state and federal dollars. Tracy and Michael worked on that application, so many thanks to those two for, for bringing that in. And then we were also notified here recently about the additional road use tax allocation we'd be getting. This is money that's again passed down through the federal government as part of the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplement Appropriations Act. That was, I think that was approved in December. And the state was determining how to allocate those funds, it is specifically for road use tax, it's a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. That will, that will be deposited into the city's account. And the same restrictions would apply to this money as our, our regular funded road use tax money. So it has to be spent on streets and operations and alike, so that was, that was good news as well. And that is what I have this evening unless there are any questions.
Questions for Ryan? Okay, I have a report, we have a number of proclamations to read this evening. First one is Housing Trust Fund Week. Whereas the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County was founded in two thousand and four and whereas for seventeen years the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County has been creating and preserving housing that is affordable. And whereas the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County has committed more than ten million dollars for housing that is affordable and whereas more than nine hundred units of housing that is affordable have been created and preserved for citizens of Johnson County by the Housing Trust Fund, including housing at Penn Oaks Apartments on Penn Street in North Liberty. And whereas the City of North Liberty has provided funding for the work accomplished by the Trust Fund in Johnson County. And whereas the Housing Trust Fund's Affordable Housing Highlights Program will take place on Friday, April twenty-third at noon on Zoom and Facebook Live, hosted by the Johnson County Affordable Housing Coalition. And they'll, will be recorded for viewing on the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County's Facebook page. Now be there resolved that we do hereby declare or designate April twenty-third to April twenty-ninth, two thousand and one to be Housing Trust Fund Week and encourage citizens in North Liberty to learn more about the fund in Johnson County. And if Ellen McCabe is present, I think she had some remarks that she wanted to make.
Mayor, I don't think she's joined us tonight.
Next one is National Service Recognition Day. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges. And whereas AmeriCorps participates, addresses the most pressing challenges facing our cities and communities. From supporting veterans, youth and other underserved populations by promoting and mentoring healthy lifestyles. Whereas National Service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable resilient communities and providing education, career skills and leadership abilities for those who serve as well as the community members they are serving. And whereas AmeriCorps participants service more than sixty thousand locations across the country, including organizations in North Liberty, helping to bolster the civic neighborhood and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. Whereas National Service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve with, both through their direct service and through management of millions of additional volunteers. Whereas National Service participants demonstrate commitment to education and patriotism by making an intensive commitment, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. Whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayor's of nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives and strengthen communities and is joining with the National League of Cities, Cities of Service and there's across the country to recognize the impact of service of the day of recognition for national services on March twenty-second, twenty-one. Therefore, we would recognize and proclaim March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one to be Service Recognition Day. And Ms. Markowski?
Yes, hi.
Hi, you're on.
Hi. Hi, yeah, um, I guess I just wanna say thank you for recognizing this proclamation. Sloan and I have both served now for almost a year coming up in July and it's been really an amazing experience and thank you for recognizing AmeriCorps and just National Service Recognition Day in general.
Thank you. Next one, we have the Week of the Young Child. Whereas 4Cs of Johnson County along with the Iowa Association for the Education of Young Children and other local organizations in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children are celebrating the fiftieth anniversary of the Week of the Young Child, W O Y C, April tenth through sixteen, two thousand and twenty-one. And whereas by highlighting the need for high-quality early care and education for all children and families within our communities and the state, these groups are committed to the early care and education system in Iowa that will ensure every child beginning at birth is healthy and successful. And whereas the latest research on brain development and how children learn and what we know about the return on investments in young children, we fully support the need for access to high-quality early care and educational services. Whereas the future of our communities and the economy of our state depends on the quality of early care and educational experiences as well as access to the high-quality early care and educational programs provided to young children today. And whereas we must recognize the vital work performed by early care and education professionals, express our gratitude for their important services and support efforts to see that they are fairly compensated. Therefore, we would hereby proclaim the April tenth through sixteen, two thousand and twenty-one as Week of the Young Child. And I think Mary Lucas is with us this evening. You're on mute.
There I go. Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Um, so my name is Mary Lucas and I am currently a consultant for the 4Cs, Community Coordinated Childcare here in Johnson County. And I am also past president of the Iowa Association for the Education of Young Children, which is the Iowa affiliate of NACI, the National Association for the Education of Young Children, which has spent many years advocating for providers of early childhood education. So I will just read the thing. On behalf of the local Week of the Young Child Committee, thank you for recognizing the Week of the Young Child with this proclamation. The Week of the Young Child has been nationally recognized for fifty years in an attempt to honor the hard work of childcare providers who provide the support and attention of our earliest learners at a time when brain development is at its height. Over the past year, the childcare workforce was deemed essential during the pandemic, yet was often unrecognized by many in their thanks and recognition. We want to thank you as our county governing board for recognizing, for North Liberty, for recognizing this workforce, the important work that they do and for supporting and declaring your support for the Week of the Young Child, thank you. And can we possibly get a copy of the signed proclamation?
Certainly.
Okay, of course, thank you.
You bet. Either contact Tracy or, you know, feel ahead of time, if she has a chance to contact you ahead of time, I'm sure the two of you can tie up and.
Okay, we'll figure it out, thank you so much.
You bet, well, thank you. Next one is Fair Housing Month. Whereas April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one marks the fifty-third anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act titled Eight of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, as amended which enunciates a national policy of fair housing without regard to race, color, religion, sex, familial status, disability, national origin and encourages fair housing opportunities for all. And whereas the Iowa City Area Association of Realtors is committed to highlight the Fair Housing Act by continuing to address discrimination in our community to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities and to plan partnership efforts with other organizations to help assure everyone of their right to free housing, fair housing. And whereas the National Association of Realtors Code of Ethics commits all realtors to providing equal professional services without discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, disability, sexual orientation, gender and identity and national origin. Therefore, we in North Liberty do hereby proclaim or resolve that April two thousand and twenty-one being Fair Housing Month. And Paul Park? Yes, sir, please.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you. My name is, like you said, Paul Park, I'm the vice president of the Iowa City Area Association of Realtors. ICAR is an organization comprised of four hundred and seventy realtors here within the greater Iowa City area and we are joined by one point four million realtors nationally who made a commitment in our profession to adhere to a strict code of ethics and uphold values of fair housing for all. Fundamentally, fair housing means that every person can live free. This means that our communities are open and welcoming, free from housing discrimination and hostility. But this also means that each one of us, regardless of race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status and disability, has access to neighborhoods of opportunity. Where our children can attend quality schools, our environment allows us to be healthy and economic opportunities and self-sufficiency can grow. On behalf of all realtors at ICAR, thank you very much, North Liberty, for joining us in honoring the Fair Housing Act by observing April as Fair Housing Month. Together, our commitment to fair housing is one that reflects the needs of our nation today and will lead us into the future of true equality for all. So thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Okay, next item, ICAD.
Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, Ms. McCabe joined us, I wonder if we could?
Well, sure.
Maybe come back to her?
Hi, Ellen. What you got for us, kid?
You had a proclamation for Housing Trust Fund Week and I was at another meeting, okay? Housing trust, housing that is affordable contributes to the health of North Liberty and its citizens. Mayor Donahue, counselors and staff, I am honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County. We are grateful for your dedication to affordable housing and we value the partnership that has been in place for many years. I would like to recognize Tracy Mulcahy, North Liberty's assistant to the city administrator, manager who has provided leadership during her service on the Trust Funds Board of Directors. We look forward to working to create additional housing that is affordable in North Liberty through our partnership. Thank you for recognizing the Housing Trust Fund Week, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you for joining us. Any comments from anybody else? Okay. Ms. Morland and Mr. Banta, you're up for the ICAD presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, we will get going here and can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Hey. Let me try to. Where is my? All right, good evening and thanks for having ICAD representatives here tonight to share some brief updates with you. I know I was here a few months ago, but we have some new information for you to share. Before I get started here, I just want to make an introduction of our new business development director, Austin Kornz. He's also on here and he's just gonna take about two minutes to let you know a little bit about his background and, and we're excited to have him join our team here in the last eight weeks. So Austin, you want to say a few words?
Yeah, thanks so much, Kate. And uh, uh, thank you all so much for giving me a chance to just introduce myself. I've, I've met some of you already, I've been working with some of you already and that's been, that's been excellent. I've also been trying to get, uh, get to know North Liberty as best as I can. I've ridden my bike through it many times and I did a little driving tour with Tom and starting to learn some of the businesses that call North Liberty home. My, my job will be to, uh, work to, work on business retention and expansion in North Liberty. Work on business attraction deals and plays as we, uh, as we have those opportunities come in front of us. So it'll be great to just get to know your city more and I'm really excited to do that. A little bit about my, my background, I come from St. Louis, Missouri. I've been here for almost two months now and I, I worked for the last four years for St. Louis Development Corporation in St. Louis and in, in a very similar role there, representing business development throughout the city of St. Louis. So I'm really excited to take some of the stuff I learned there and, and bring it here, but also, you know, get to learn all of the unique things about our communities here in Johnson County and get to hopefully represent them well, so I'm really excited. And if you'd like to schedule a time to meet with me and get to know me a little better, please, please reach out. My, uh, my information is in my email signature, I can share that with the group as well.
Thank you, Austin. So as you know, ICAD's mission is really to, to lead regional economic development initiatives throughout Johnson County and beyond. We do serve over into the Tipton area, down into Washington and West Liberty and West Branch and then do some work over in the Amana area as Whirlpool is one of our large employers. Really focused on the interstate commerce companies. Obviously, many of those are in North Liberty, just to kind of give you a reminder of some of the ones we're really focused on trying to help them grow, support them whether it's workforce initiatives or, or other needs. them grow, uh, support them, whether it's workforce initiatives or, or other needs that a company here in the area needs, uh, to be able to grow. So we had an interesting year, as you know, not a lot of the same, uh, ability to kind of collect the data that we normally do. Um, but we've been trying really hard to regularly check in with businesses and get a pulse on what was happening over the past year. And we have some highlights for you from North Liberty tonight that Tom Bant is gonna share now.
Thanks, Kate. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Appreciate the opportunity. Uh, as Kate mentioned, obviously, we, we've lived through a strange year. Uh, historically, we have a chance to sit with our employers year over year and, and learn about growth opportunities, expansion, new product introductions and things like that. Uh, last year, we, uh, we started to make these calls at about this time, uh, shortly, uh, after things, our, our worlds kind of got flipped upside down. And so many organizations at that point weren't really thinking about expansion projects or, uh, new product introductions. Uh, it was, it was significant time of uncertainty. But I'm happy to report a number of the, the companies that we've engaged and, and predominantly our interstate commerce community in general within the region has fared well despite the uncertainty and despite the challenges that, uh, we were hit with over the last twelve to thirteen months. Here's a few highlights of some companies, uh, as Kate mentioned, we've, uh, engaged them about a year ago uh, over the course of May and June via Zoom, uh, with our traditional synchronous calls. But these were really check-in calls, making sure that, uh, we understood any challenges they had and, and tried to align and connect them to resources as things were emerging. But, uh, what we found is, for the most part, our company survived. Hiring was flat year over year. Uh, JMI had a little bit of growth. Uh, and at the end of the day, we're encouraged by a number of these organizations reporting fairly good top lines, uh, by the end of the year. Many of them had disruption, but it was short-lived and stuff that they could recover from. So we're encouraged and looking forward to synchronous calls over the next two months. We've started that process and outreach, and we'll be securing hopefully about seventy visits across the region. And all of the companies in, in North Liberty are on that list that we serve. And hopefully, next year at this time, we can report, uh, a more traditional look at job growth, expansion projects, and things underway. But, uh, early feedback and early reports are that our companies weathered and have done well. You can see Moxie is, is actively exploring some, uh, expansion. I know they did some investments, uh, during this time. And so we're hopeful we can support their efforts as well going forward. Uh, if we flip to the next slide. Some of, some of the things that we did learn and, and things that, uh, I, I'm, I'm happy to, to hear and, and timely as we listen to the proclamations and, and the work that you guys have prioritized and invested in, uh, historically and, and over this last year. But things that were, were critical pre-pandemic also were, remain critical post-pandemic. And I think in a couple instances, you can see we're, we're maybe exacerbated. But transportation and connectivity throughout the region is still a, a, a major opportunity. Affordable childcare, uh, you guys acknowledged the importance of that earlier on. Uh, the work that you guys have done is, is been extremely admirable and important work over the course of this last year. Affordable housing, uh, obviously, again, you guys are very involved in that space. Interestingly enough, affordable housing is, is one of the key criteria, uh, for folks that are looking to migrate and move. I think there's an anticipated, uh, report of nearly twenty million people may start to migrate from larger metropolitan areas and redistribute across the country over the next few years. Uh, affordable housing, uh, broadband connectivity, affordable childcare, and then work opportunities are, are the top three or four things that they're looking for. So, uh, as you guys continue to prioritize the growth, and, and we'll talk a little bit more about, uh, kind of some, some opportunities we have to be involved with that later, uh, these are things that, that, uh, please continue to, to invest in and prioritize as you have been. And it's gonna continue to make you a desirable place and, and attractive for people and, and businesses to grow.
So just sharing some exciting news tonight. You probably saw, we, we did receive a large grant from the EDA, a two-year grant, to be able to really grow and expand our ed tech cluster here in our region and actually throughout the state. So we'll be working closely with partners throughout Iowa, but that will be housed here through Icad. And so very excited to, to really, um, dig into that work. Uh, that industry has grown tremendously over the last year. It's a huge opportunity for our area to be able to plant that flag and really, uh, be a place where, uh, new technologies are discovered and piloted. Um, our students and learners stand to benefit from that work as well. So, uh, really excited about the opportunity that lies before us. Uh, we also have Innovation Ed Awards coming up with, in partnership with the Chamber. On the twentieth of April, we'll be recognizing a lot of innovation that happened this year. So look for that. It'll be a live stream, but then also, uh, we'll have a very small gathering at the Angler to be able to, to give those awards out. Some of the, uh, workforce issues that we're seeing, as you might guess, uh, really that decision to return to work, um, we're seeing about thirty percent that have, uh, gone back at this point. Hearing a lot of companies locally that have large workforces, um, saying they'll probably wait until fall to do kind of a full return or a hybrid return. Um, and then, uh, projections are that about thirty percent of all, all workers will remain remote, uh, throughout the nation. So it's a pretty large percentage that will continue to be remote, which does give us opportunities to attract new people to our area. They're bringing their jobs with them or one or both of maybe a, a household. So you'll see that we just, the press release went out just about five o'clock today. We did renew our joint venture with the Economic Alliance with a narrowed scope of regional marketing. So we'll be doing talent, uh, marketing and business attraction marketing jointly for the region. Um, and we, we think there's some great opportunities to, to continue to work together to market this region as a place to move your business, to, uh, move your families. So, um, you'll be seeing more about that in the months to come. Specifically, North Liberty, we, we've enjoyed recently working with your city staff on some economic development planning discussions. We'll continue to have, uh, some, um, facilitated discussion here in the next few weeks. I think it's a really great time, communities all over kind of looking ahead and talking about, you know, what plans, uh, what investments they want to make, the, the, the things that are important to your specific community. And so we're doing this with a couple other organizations as well, um, just being part of kind of shepherding that process and, and having those conversations and, and moving that forward. Obviously, we're also still very supportive of the North Liberty Hospital, the UIHC, um, uh, project that will come back before, I believe, this summer. Um, obviously, an opportunity for very high-value job growth. So just wanted you to know that we're keeping our eye kind of on that. And then there's some new projects that we're working with Ryan's team on. Uh, we're definitely seeing more activity and more interest, um, yeah, by companies looking to, to, uh, move here. So that's all good news and, and really shows sign of, uh, things rebounding. And then this is the last slide. We've been here before. You know that we are committed to collaborating. Uh, we know that's the way forward. So we'll continue to work with our eighty partners here in the area. Think Iowa City, the Business Partnership, and the Downtown District, really to look at ways we can, uh, make a difference and impact in the community. Um, I, I want to thank, I know Brent's not here tonight, but he's been a great addition to that Project Better Together team. Uh, we'll be looking at, at what's next here over the course of the next few weeks. Um, but we're excited about the future. I think there's huge opportunities for our area, and I think relationships have grown, uh, over this past year. And I think that with that brings some great opportunities. So I just want to thank Council for your support of our organization. Please always reach out if there's things that you have questions about or ideas. We're very open to that. And I also want to thank you for your leadership over this last difficult year. I know it's been a trying time for everyone, and, and I appreciate the time you've spent to help your own community. So happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Kate?
Kate, will you be able to, and I'm sorry if you've said this already, will you guys be able to provide this slide especially, um, after the meeting? It was the only one not included in our packet.
Absolutely. I'll share this with Ryan, and he can share it out.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else, everybody?
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. So just a comment first, um, well, Austin, welcome to the community. Kate, uh, thank you especially for your leadership over the course of the year. Heard lots of positive things from Counselor Smith and others, um, with Project Better Together, um, and Tom as well. So Tom, I am curious, have you seen any changes in the transportation, um, needs or conversations with companies, especially with more remote workers and kind of in the longer term? Just has that conversation changed, um, in your calls?
That's a good question, Annie. And I think that, uh, I don't know yet. I think the calls coming up this summer will be an opportunity to really learn that. Obviously, over the last year, I think there's been a, a significant shift in transportation. But I'll find out more in this year's calls, and I'll circle back.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you all very much for attending this evening's council meeting. And the reports are always fun to listen to and gives us good guidance of what we may need to be doing in the future too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Council.
Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Nelson, EDC presentation.
I'm here.
Your time, sir.
I'll share my screen here. I'll work this down. You can all see it.
Yes.
So let me start by thanking you guys, uh, for your continued support. You know, two thousand twenty marks the eleventh year North Liberty has supported our organization and marks the seventeenth full year of us supporting Iowa's entrepreneurs and legacy businesses. So since your first investment, uh, in two thousand ten, you've invested just over sixty-one thousand dollars in our operations. And for that, our team and our area entrepreneurs are truly grateful. I've provided you ahead of the time and also shared the North Liberty Annual Report. Um, so you, you can track that as I talk, uh, today. So as a reminder, you know, EDC is focused on creating and growing high-impact interstate commerce businesses, the kind that attract both money and talent from outside the region, the kind that creates wealth generation needed to support highly vibrant communities. Now, we work with startups, we work with early-stage companies, we work with later-stage or legacy companies. And pretty much about, uh, over seventeen years, a third, a third, and a third is about where our resources have gone. So many people mistake us as a startup organization. And while we do work with startups, um, only about a third of our resources have gone there over that amount of time. In difference to the other economic development organizations that do a lot of things for varied businesses, we have a very razor-focused, uh, uh, program that's specifically tailored to the specific company that we're working with. If you, if you read the Spodix testimonial that's on here, you'll see that, you know, that was one where our, our marketing executive stepped in and became their marketing executive for a full year, helping them actually build out a marketing organization, hire the right people. Um, and, and as of this week, um, has, we, we helped them hire the person to replace her. Um, and so, you know, there's an example of how our organization really gets in, rolls up our sleeves, and works hands-on with these companies to really help them grow. We work with about thirty-five companies at any one time. We touch about a hundred and twenty companies a year. We were founded in two thousand three, and we've served now about eleven hundred and seventy-six businesses in Iowa who have in turn created roughly three point eight billion dollars of positive economic impact. Uh, that impact is shown on the report. Capital raised and deployed by these companies, uh, has been seven hundred and sixty-eight million. Revenue growth by the companies we've supported is about two point three billion. Net new jobs over three thousand. Average wage keeps growing. Right now, it's about sixty-two thousand. And increased payroll by these companies we've supported is six hundred and seventy-two million dollars. Over the same time, we've had to maintain our own organization. So we have raised or generated over fourteen million to fund what we do. Give you a sense of where that comes from, thirty percent, thirty-seven percent of our funding comes from private supporters. So corporations around you, all the different private supporters throughout, uh, mostly throughout the corridor, but around Iowa. Twenty-nine percent comes from our own operational earnings, um, and things that we contract out to do. Twenty-eight percent from some form of public support like yours. Um, so that's where the money comes from, comparing what we've invested to the impact created. That's a return of about two hundred and seventy dollars to one, which is, as you measure these types of organizations nationally, it's one of the highest ROI calculations for the program of our kind. When it comes to twenty twenty twenty, and you heard the, the folks at Icad talk about it, I mean, we had of the, all of the clients that we reached out to immediately when the pandemic started, and we had zero client or past client, uh, closures, uh, due to the pandemic. The average, uh, because we work with only interstate commerce businesses, the average business was probably, was flat to up. Some businesses were up significantly, like Perdeck and Spodix. Um, and, you know, the clients we measure, just the clients we measure alone, were up net over two hundred and fifty million dollars in twenty twenty. So it was, it was, you know, while it was kind of a, a tumultuous year, it was not a terrible economic year for some of our major job creators and wealth creators. Now, you invest in us for the city of North Liberty, so I'll focus the rest of my marks on North Liberty. So we're currently working with Moxie Solar, Spodix, MC Development, and then Dr. Krupp, who's the, the, the quintessential entrepreneur, also used to be the head of ER at, at, uh, Mercy Hospital in the city. He is the guy that founded the Mask of Wellness Program. I'm not sure. A lot of you may have seen that, um, as the pandemic started, and we, we helped them put that whole program in place. He's also got a new surgical device we've been helping him with, and, and, and why not? He's also got a tattoo cream that he's also working on. So he, focus, focus, focus is one of the harder things for some entrepreneurs. Um, MC Development is a testimonial. It's right there. I mean, if you think about it, MC Development and Perdeck are two clients we've spent years working with are kind of at the heart of that ed tech cluster of the ed tech direction, uh, that Kate was talking about. Collectively, the North Liberty businesses supported have created kind of the following impact. So in twenty twenty, uh, for capital raised and deployed, about five hundred and twenty thousand, most of that was Spodix, uh, between PPP and federal EC cog funding, um, programmed to dates, one point four million for capital raised and deployed. And North Liberty increased revenue was twenty million in twenty twenty. Um, again, most of that was Spodix, sixty-six million over time, net new jobs seventy in twenty twenty, two hundred and thirteen over time. Average wage sixty-three thousand versus sixty-two over the, over ten years. Increased payroll, four million, just thirteen million programmed to date. And the overall economic impact was twenty-four point five million dollars for you all in the North Liberty area in twenty twenty, um, which in all is a great return for your annual investment. So we were found, we were really founded, uh, to help Iowa's entrepreneurial-founded businesses succeed faster and more, and more often to increase the overall vitality and sustainability of our communities and make sure that we keep home office businesses and all of the, of the wealth creation and community support that goes with that in our corridor. So thanks again for your generosity. Be happy to take any questions you got.
So, Mr. Nelson.
No, just, uh, uh, again, that's quite a return on investment for what you guys do. So that's much appreciated.
Thank you very much. We, we, there's five of us that do it. Um, we all just love doing it. People have said, when will I retire? And I said, this is retired for me. I mean, I started this to be retired, so really enjoy it, um, and, uh, love working in your community.
Thank you. Anything else for the gentleman? Thank you again, sir.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You as well. Next item is UNESCO presentation, uh, Mr. Kenyon.
Great. Thank you very much. I do not have any slides, so you get to stare at me, but I will be mindful of your time because of that. Uh, I did put, uh, our, rather, Ryan did put our, uh, annual report, uh, from twenty twenty into your packets if you wanted to, uh, peruse that at any point. But again, uh, as Mayor said, my name is John Kenyon. I'm the Executive Director of the UNESCO City of Literature Organization. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about, uh, who we are and what we've been doing lately. Um, just so that everybody's on the same page, I did want to explain what UNESCO is. A lot of folks don't know, but UNESCO stands for the United Nations Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization. And it is an adjunct of the United Nations, and it has, uh, many programs and initiatives that it undertakes. And one of those that's fairly recent is the Creative Cities Network. And the Creative Cities Network was founded in two thousand four, and it was designed to form a network of creative cities around the world that could use their creativity and, and kind of harness the creativity of the people there, uh, both to elevate what all of them were doing, but also, uh, in recent years, to do things like address, uh, the twenty thirty UN strategic development goals that deal with sustainable development. And so, uh, Iowa City joined the network in two thousand eight. We were designated as the third city of literature in the world. And at that time, we were among the first dozen or so members of the Creative Cities Network. In the intervening years, the network has grown, and we're a very, uh, robust group of cities now. We're one of thirty-nine cities of literature around the world, uh, one of only two still in the United States. Uh, Seattle and Washington is the other, and we're, uh, part of the two hundred and forty-six-member Creative Cities Network. So there are cities not only of literature, but of music, film, gastronomy, crafts and folk arts, media arts, and design. And so my organization is an independent nonprofit, and we manage. And so my organization is an independent nonprofit and we manage the designation on behalf of Iowa City. And the first thing I would emphasize is that we very much see the designation as regional in nature. While Iowa City's name might be on the designation, obviously, our arts and culture and the literary community goes beyond any city borders. And we really think of it as more of a Johnson County-wide designation. And our efforts and programming reflect that. Largely, what we do is seeking to improve quality of life by connecting the literary sector and the wider community. And we do that in a number of different ways. First would be what I would call networking, which is just really trying to connect people both within the literary sector and from the literary sector out into the general community and vice versa. But also identifying resources and identifying needs and trying to find ways to bring the two together. We also do a lot of advocacy and promotion of literary assets in our community. So we work with Think Iowa City and some of the things they're doing and are just looking to make sure that people here locally are aware of what we have and can take advantage of that. But also people outside know what we have so that they can come visit or perhaps stay. It's very much, I loved hearing what Kurt and Tom and Kate were talking about in terms of bringing attention to our area. And I think that we can help bolster the quality of life. So it makes their jobs a little easier. The larger piece that we have and the one that's most visible is programming. We have major programs such as the Iowa City Book Festival that happens each fall. Our One Book, Two Book Children's Literature Festival, which solicits and celebrates writing from students throughout our county as well as connects them with writing and activities from folks who are creating that for children of their ages. We have our Music IC Festival, which is celebrating the connections between chamber music and literature and many other smaller programs and partnerships of other organizations and entities throughout our area. So our annual report that I had sent along and that Ryan had placed in your packet for you details a lot of what we have been up to, including our work on a new strategic plan. We took advantage of what I guess you would think of as some relative downtime during the pandemic and the quarantining to come together as a board, as an organization, and to come up with new strategies for our next four years. And one of the things we did was to come up with a new mission statement that is a slight tweaking of what we had had before. But it highlights some of the areas that we want to emphasize. And so now we say we build and support diverse communities of writers and audiences through the transformative power of story. And one of the main strategies that we have, one of our main goals, is to pursue programming innovations focused on collaboration and on connecting with new communities. And one of the things we found in 2020, when we moved all of our operations online, like most cultural organizations did, like most organizations did, was that we could offer similar programming to what we had done in person, but actually expand our reach. We had people from different parts of our community, from different parts of Eastern Iowa who were participating, as well as different people from around the world who never obviously could have participated in in-person events here in Iowa City. And so one of the things that we have found is that we would like to be able to, once we all move back to in-person events later this year, knocking wood, is that we can still maintain some of those things that we learned this year about making our events more accessible, harnessing some of the technology that we've all been able to master, like we're doing here on this meeting right now, and make those events accessible to people who maybe can't get out, who maybe had missed out on what we had done. So there's certainly lessons that we have learned. And while we have a lot of pent-up energy and wanting to get out in front of people and rub shoulders and have those face-to-face conversations, we're mindful now that we need to make sure that we're reaching many different populations who might not be able to do those things or be as comfortable. Beyond that, I would just say that we thank North Liberty for its ongoing support. It has been a foundational partner ever since 2008 when we earned our designation. Have a couple of former board members here tonight at the meeting. Chris Hoffman, who of course was one of our first board members very early on and helped us so much with our foundation. Ryan Hayer was a board member for a long time as well. And of course, Jenny Garner with the North Liberty Community Library is in her second year as President of our board and has been so good at helping us to find ways to connect with and collaborate with North Liberty. So again, thank you very much for your support and the opportunity to speak with you this evening, and I would be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions for John?
No questions, John, but thank you so much the, to see what this organization has become. I don't think we would have recognized this when you started it.
Well, you were in on the ground floor, so you have a good perspective there, Chris.
Yeah.
Just want to add a little bit. Sorry, Mayor. John, thank you. This is just something that's obviously really unique to our area and just all the diversity of offerings that you have, you and your team. So just thank you for that growth and support and really meeting the needs of of educating and continuing to progress as a larger community. So thank you for that.
Great. Thank you. And if you ever think of ways that we could do a better job of getting out into North Liberty or collaborating in North Liberty, you think of opportunities, please let us know. Pass those through Jenny or reach out to me directly. It'd be wonderful.
Thanks.
Anything else? Best wishes and continued success in the future, sir.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the time this evening.
Next item that we have is Ranshaw Way's Phase Five Project. Now's the time for a public hearing regarding proposed plans, specifications, form of contract and estimated cost of the project. Have we seen any comments, Mr. Rusnick or Tracy on the project?
No, we've not.
Okay. Anyone online that would like to make comment? Hearing none. Call a public hearing to a close. You have before you Resolution Number 2021-27. A resolution finally approving and confirming plans, specifications, estimate of cost for the Ranshaw Way Project Phase Five. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Seconded?
Moved and seconded. Final discussion or questions? Tracy, please take a roll.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
I see that we have two members not present at the time. So the vote is three affirmative, none opposed, two absent. Next items, the Dog Park Membership Resolution Number 2021-28. A resolution approving the Dog Park Membership Fee Structure. Anyone wish to make comment on that one?
I just had a question. Did, were we able to entertain some thought about if you had two dogs? Would there be like a second dog be cheaper?
We talked, you know, we talked about a number of those things and included the the pack, the dog pack in some of these discussions. And at the end of the day, we kept it similar to what some of our neighboring communities were doing from a fee perspective. If that's something you'd like us to go back and look at, we certainly can. But at this point, that's not what's included in the in the resolution.
Well, I think maybe I guess we could get it going and then see how things shake out. If it becomes prohibitive for people, we can always regroup.
That sounds fair.
Any other comments? Anyone wish to establish the resolution?
Still moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. My whole comments. Tracy, please.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
Resolution passes three affirmative, none opposed, two absent. Franchise fee. Now's the time for a public hearing regarding the franchise fee ordinance changes. Did we receive any comments on such, Grant, Ryan or Tracy?
No.
Anyone online wishing to make comment? If not, call a public hearing to a close. First item is Resolution Number 2021-29. A resolution adopting a revenue purpose statement for the disposition of franchise fee. Anyone wish to establish that resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Wason. Discussion or questions or explanation?
Yeah, I do have a question for Ryan. So I know our primary focus was parks and rec and that. So and so the wording is pretty set, parks and rec. Is that going to be too restrictive for staff later on if they need to catch up things or?
Well, the wording is is parks and trails and you know, from our perspective, looking at the the long-term plan, there there's, well, there's many more projects than there is funding. Certainly, we could, if the council wishes to, we could open it up to to other things if it's, if you if you want to do that. I got the impression that we wanted to keep it focused, so it committed everyone to, you know, the the parks and trails system. But so from my perspective, I think we'll have no problem using that money for the the park and trail projects. But if something comes up and the council changes its mind, it would have to go through this process again, or at least the revenue statement purpose process again.
Sure. So so if you feel that it's not too restrictive, then that's okay then. I just want to.
I don't. Or I do, I, I don't think it's too restrictive. I think we'll be able to to get some, get some park projects done with this with this money. And we're going to have to subsidize those projects with other money if we want to be as aggressive as the CIP shows.
Okay.
Ready to vote? Tracy?
Pollock?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Resolution passes three affirmative, none opposed, two absent. Next, we have the first consideration of ordinance Number 2021-05. An ordinance amending the Mid-American Energy Company Interstate Power and Light Company and Lynn County REC Electric Cooperative franchise agreements to adjust franchise fees. The only question that I had is Interstate Power and Light are aligned? Does it make any difference if they're the same company?
The interstate, they're technically Interstate Power Light Company and that is who our franchise agreement is with. That's the appropriate entity for this particular for this ordinance amendment. But they they are doing business, of course, as a line, but this is the right language for our ordinance.
Perfect. Didn't want something to sneak in on us here, so. Okay. Anyone wish to establish the first reading?
Still moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Final questions or discussion? Tracy, please.
Wason?
Aye.
Hoffman?
Aye.
Pollock?
Aye.
First reading passes three affirmative, none opposed, two absent. Next item, livestock ordinance. Now's the time for a public hearing regarding proposed amendments to the livestock ordinances. Anyone present or online wishing to make comment? Anybody online wishing to make comment? Anyone have written statements from, that were presented to Grant, Russ or Tracy?
I don't think we received anything other than the emails that you folks received from a resident in Cedar Springs.
With that, call a public hearing to a close. We have first consideration of ordinance 2021-06. An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of North Liberty, Iowa, updating portions of the Animal Control Code concerning livestock within city limits. Anyone wish to establish the first reading?
Still moved?
Seconded.
Then moved and seconded. Final discussion or questions?
I just have a couple of questions.
Please.
So, Grant, the banding thing goes away because is that?
Uh, yeah, I can answer a few of these if you like, but I think Russ is going to take the lead on this one, if that's all right.
Yeah, if you want, I can quickly summarize the 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 changes that we're making. So we're making a couple. What we're proposing is to reduce setback for chicken coops and pen areas from 15 feet to 10 feet. That seems to be a little bit more consistent with other communities in Iowa. Remove overly burdensome requirements for removal of droppings. Make noise and smell subject to city nuisance ordinances. Only requiring one, one wing of a chicken to be clipped, removing the banning of legs. It's it's my understanding that that we've never had an issue with the chicken getting loose and we need to track that down. And that was a, that was a recommendation from a citizen. And also removing the language that that a permit is void without homeowners association consent. And we do not really do that for any other thing. And it's very difficult for us to keep track of whether homeowner associations are active or not now. So those are a summary. I'm happy to talk about any or all of those if you'd wish.
I just had one question when the person emailed us and she was talking about you letting the, letting the chickens run around a little bit. And we have like a 12 square foot per chicken area. Is is that just because that's what it was before or?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I came in after I wrote it, but I, you know, I put some thought into kind of really what the the code author's point was, right? And I, I think I saw an email about a comparison to pets and, you know, dogs and cats can run around in the yard and go up to to, you know, basically a property line. And and I, you know, I would note that our ordinance doesn't consider chickens pets, obviously. What what this really is, is an exception for livestock to be located in a residential zone. And so when you, and actually furthermore, some communities restricted entirely to single-family detached dwellings. And we actually allow for single-family and zero lot to family lots. And so I think it was purposefully, purposefully restrictive, right? We had larger setbacks. We didn't want these structures to be too big. So I really think that the code authors made an intentional, were very intentional to really limit the scale of these and to make sure they maintain adequate setbacks to property lines.
So I just wondered if maybe we shouldn't have set, made a size for the building and then the pan area should have separate side, then you can let that run out to the 10 feet.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I don't know that we're in favor of of really expanding, you know, too much. And I, I would note that you know, really, we have restrictions on, you know, storage buildings being 200 square feet. And so we, we're pretty restrictive here with the size of what we would call accessory structures and things like that. I mean, I think we could look at increasing a little bit, but but we feel that the size is appropriate.
I mean, I'm totally fine with that, but you know, the way I read it is the, you know, it's square feet, but no more than 12 feet, square feet per animal.
That's correct.
It's like pan, but includes the pan. You know, and just if you were trying to spread that out a little bit on your yard, it may be better to let them run in a bigger area, but have to limit the size of the building and then let them have a fenced in area up to 10 feet to the property lawn. I just don't know if it's just, I don't know if that's the way it's intended to sound there. That's what I was telling you about. But if I can chime in real quick, this is, this is not a that that portion of the code is not being amended. It's only the the language that's in red that has changed.
Yeah.
And I apologize if you're, so this is the language that was originally adopted. And as Mr. Rusnick said, that it's, it was a very restrictive ordinance as it was adopted. I think there was probably some. I think there was probably some concern to make sure that. You don't overdo it, right? And I think some time has passed and these are some, some requests. Some of these requests have come from the residents saying, hey, this is, seemed to be okay. And then these are the, these are the ones that we, after looking at it, think are legal and have. You know, from a planning perspective, I don't want to put words in Russ's mouth. Don't, don't, don't violate his general principles with respect to zoning stuff. So the, the idea was to, to take, take the foot off the brakes a little bit. And, and so if you wanted something more expansive, absolutely. And you're welcome to, to, if you want to move to amend portions of it, we can certainly do that and bring it back, however you want to do it. But we didn't, we didn't want to, we didn't want to, for something that had been kind of sensitive in, in previous iterations. We didn't want to try to go wholesale or whole cloth with, with new policy.
So it is a question was asked and I thought it was actually a reasonable question. I don't know how much. But it seems like if they had a little more space to run around, they would be less rough on the yard and stuff. So we don't, I don't know if it's a big, I don't know, but I can't remember if Chris and Andy were pro or anti chicken at the time, so.
Just for the record, I was pro chicken. Thanks for asking, Brian. I, I think the, I'm with you in spirit on what this is, that's really the only thing I saw in this as well. And Grant, if this is something that we need to add into this language, I'd like for there to be more space for the chickens. And you know, going to the fence, if it's an existing fenced in yard, I was actually fine with that. I saw reasonable consideration for that to happen. If then a neighboring dog or cat did not like that, then that might be something that the chicken would just avoid the fence and not go that far anyway. So that's the only thing I'm looking to add. I think the, the, the comments that we received. Really don't give me pause for, for any reason why we, why we couldn't just allow the chickens to have more space to, to roam. The coop, the pan itself, that language being separated from the, the roaming area of the chicken. If that could be separated in language, I think the coop size is not really in question. I don't think anybody really has any major pushback on that size. And the location of it being within, you know, not within 10 feet of the property line. I think everybody is, or what I've seen anyway, is, isn't, is, is cool with that. I ultimately, I think the only thing that we could do a little bit more here, and I appreciate taking the foot off of the brake, is just to give them more space to roam. So I will lean on you, Grant, or, and Russ, and in a way that we can pull this off. Yeah, so pointing at you, Russ, how that might be something that we could incorporate. Maybe it's taking whatever fencing is in the yard for the coop and, you know, confining that space. Maybe just allowing them to move that out at some point in time to closer to the property line. And if it's that same 10 feet border, you know, there's some reasonable justification for that. But I really don't even think that that needs to be the case. I think they could be able to go right to, to a fence line.
I guess the thing to add or, I mean, they can jump in. But so Brian, I was also pro chicken or in favor of this. When we voted on it before it came before us. I'm fine. I mean, I don't disagree. More space for any mammal is a good thing. I do actually like a little separation between, you know, property lines if someone shares a fence line. So I'm fine with how the revisions currently stand.
So do you list off for any amendments tonight or wait till the second reading?
Can I just ask a question, Mayor? Annie, would you, would you be okay if the, the fenced in area for? The chickens was extended to that 10-foot barrier on the property lines? So the chickens couldn't get right to the fence line if there was a fenced in yard? But it would give them more space, but still be within that, that tent, not within that 10 feet limit of the property line?
So should we still have a buffer from where the chickens are to 10 feet to the property fence line is what you're asking me? Yeah, I'm in favor. I think just making sure there is a buffer between that shared fence line with the property owner's line and then the chickens. I'm fine with that.
Cool. And I, I think that's, Brian, how do you feel about that?
Yeah, that's fine with me. Actually, that's where I was, I was totally agree with that. So.
I'm also, I'm curious much. So what would be, I guess, the easiest way to do that?
Grant?
Clarifying question. Do you want to maintain a minimum amount of square feet per, per bird? I presume you probably do. A, a minimum amount of, rather than a maximum is what I'm asking. Right now, I think we have to have, you can't keep them in less than four, four square feet is the per bird, right?
I kind of took that as that was the building.
That's what I, that's how I.
I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. You're absolutely right. I withdraw that question at all. We're talking about the, the floor area disregard. Okay, nevermind.
That should still apply. It just that you could have a, I think it needs to say the fourth, between four and 12 square feet. For a bird, for the building and the fencing area can be within the size of the yard up to 10 feet from the property line.
Just, just to clarify, and we can, we can work on language. We think we know what the intent is. But this is what the code currently says. It says the coop, the foul house or fenced pen area shall have a minimum of four square feet. Of floor area for each chicken. So that, it, it is a little wonky, so we'll, we'll work on that.
Well, I think we, I think we have, I think we understand the intent. So I guess the question would be, Grant, can we, do we, do we approve the first reading as is and come back with? With the, the, the second reading revised or is it easier to table or what do you?
I think it might be easier to table. And if you like it, you can, you can, and we can, you can skip a reading next time. If you have a vote of four that wants to do that, if you want, if you want to move it ahead of reading next time. But I would table this until the next one, push, push this first reading until our next meeting. We can amend the language.
Using that advice, want someone wants to make a motion to table till the next regular meeting?
Just a clarifying question, if you don't mind, Mayor. Grant or Ryan, what's the, what's the point of the process of having three readings in, in, in an ordinance reading, for example, like this? If, you know, the idea, is it just to air it three times exactly how it's going to be written so that the public can comment on it? Okay, there, there are not, there are not little subtle things that we can do to, to monkey with it along the way and craft it, so to speak. As it makes its way through the pipeline.
Right. The idea is you get, is that the public gets, gets three chances to comment on it, on what would be its final form.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
So then I would suggest we move to table it until the next meeting, so we can tweak the language.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries the table to the next regular council meeting.
These chickens.
Full business? New business?
I have a couple of things.
Please.
Since everything is online, I took the weather spotter class. That was kind of interesting. So I have a license certificate that says I can tell you when it's raining. So, and then for Tracy, the second claims that we, that a report that we came out this week, that really worked pretty good. We managed to see where department it was and everything. So it was pretty readable. It was very interesting to handle. So I think that was pretty close to what I was originally looking for, when I talked about it before. And then last weekend on Saturday, it was Muddy Creek Cleanup Day. So we had a lot of people come out and start out at nine o'clock when it was a little cloudy. But by 10 o'clock, it was raining pretty heavily and stuff. But we got most of the way from Penn Street all the way down to, to Zeller and then a little bit farther. And so we appreciate everybody coming out. We had a lot of scouts and other family members and stuff. And then I can attest that Muddy Creek is indeed muddy because I fell in twice, so.
Want to also thank all the persons who helped clean the park at Penn Meadows as far as the ball fields and areas around that. That's always very helpful. Anything else news?
No.
If not, with the brevity and number of people we have tonight, we'll.